We're good?
I think so.
Okay, we're back. All right, let's continue with our agenda. Next on our agenda, we have reports and correspondence. We have the project status report. Excuse me. The most recent updates are we received a site plan for Miller Farm on three nineteen, and that's targeting to have them on the May meeting agenda. We also received an updated site plan from Armada Center Properties Self-Storage, and they are here tonight. And the ordinance audit workshops, we've had two. And so far, we have one more scheduled for April seventh at ten A.M. Ten A.M., excuse me. And we'll have information for discussion. Hopefully, maybe something at the May meeting. And we also received Elmont Township's notice of adoption of the master plan. Michelle sent and posted the attachment for anyone interested in reviewing the whole plan, rather than printing it out for all of us. So, at this time, if anybody doesn't have any other comments or questions regarding this, a motion would be in order to...
Well, I have, I presented this information from...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Caitlin, I'm pushing the competition, but they, I've been to some of their seminars. They're free, and they're in Flint, if you don't mind Flint, they do a nice job on them.
Sorry about that.
It was last, it just came in my email today, so that was last month.
Okay. And then we did receive, I'm sorry, one more email from Andy, I believe it was, or from...
That's what the site plan is.
The site plan, so that one...
It says Andy on the top.
Yeah, it says Andy on the top.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, should that just be with the site plan information?
I think so.
Okay, all right, so, a motion would be in order to receive and file the reports and correspondence as presented. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have Armada Center Storage Site Plan. Andy, you're here, correct? Would you like to come up? Thank you for your patience. The floor is yours.
Andrew Mazer, two oh five oh two, Windgarden Drive, upon Tonchar. Presented the site plan, and here for feedback.
Then Caitlin, if you don't have anything else, Andy, to say, Caitlin, then if you want to go ahead and start your review.
Sure. Could I borrow that correspondence that he emailed, just to speak to it real quick, just for the record, if it was submitted officially? Try to make sure that we speak to, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, so, the applicant had sent an email, and that was included in your correspondence, talking about, the applicant had reached out to their three residential neighbors along that property line. We talked more intently last week about screening, and so they provided additional screening for those specific, along that specific portion of that property line. They're proposing to have more intensity associated with that, and exceed our minimum height requirement. And so they're proposing to have ten-foot higher, specific trees, and things of that nature. One of the things we talked about, that the applicant speaks to in his email, is that they evaluated the ability to put in a berm. And so their engineer indicated that the berm is not feasible due to the property to the east, the topography change from their property into their property. Adding of that berm would make it a difference, again, from a safety standpoint, was their indication. There also was, the berm would prevent the runoff of water, so it naturally drains towards his site, and so putting a berm now is channeling, in a way. They are increasing the grade drop to also increase the shaping of that slope to be maintained as well. The Tonchar engineer did review the updated plan and did speak to the berm. Was that included in the applica, or in the packet?
Yes.
It's on the other side.
Oh, on the other side. And so if you read that in your packet, they essentially kind of talked through some of those different engineering difficulties as well, showing that there would be those different limits. They do propose different swaling and things of that nature onsite to help with the existing drainage. That would be required as part of that. And then, greater detail on drainage verification would be done during that engineering plan review to ensure that we are going to minimize as best as possible any level of drainage issue in that area. So that's, that's the correspondence you received in your, thank you for letting me borrow it.
You're welcome.
So that's the correspondence you received in your packet. That was one of those lingering questions we had from our last meeting. So hopefully, that information provided to you helped you make that decision. I have an updated review letter dated March nineteenth, and so you can see that there were some additional components that were added, that they did address some of those different components. One of the biggest outstanding components associated with the property is the landscaping screening, if the planning commission finds what's proposed sufficient. One of the things that the applicant has remedied, they, I don't know if that's the copy that's in front of you, but the one that has the updated landscaping kelks. So that was something I caught in the review letter that has, yes, since yet been corrected, that they have the proper tree counting in their kelp table. And so that is, the numbers have been updated, as well as the species concerned. The question would be for the planning commission ultimately, do we see that this residentially zone buffer is sufficient, or any other components? What has been updated is that site plan analysis, so looking at that standard sheet. So standard A, as part of our consideration for this application, is the vehicle access and circulation, the driveway that's proposed, as well as circulation within the property, maintaining health, safety, and welfare. B, that the location, the relationship of surrounding properties is not negatively impacted, so that means excessive traffic, that means adequate screening from the parking and service areas, and making sure that emergency vehicles are able to navigate onsite. And the last standard associated with site plan approval is relationship to natural features, so that the design of the site doesn't impede the woodlands, wetlands, floodability, soils, edibility. So there is that water body that's nearby, but other than that, there are no wetlands specifically onsite and things of that nature associated with the property. And so with that, that is my analysis. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Commissioners, any... Alex, if you have any comments or questions?
I guess the one concern that I was seeing Caitlin was, especially after today's rain, was the runoff and the drain that's proposed on the property versus where the natural drain of the property is. But it appears that that will be addressed at the engineering stage.
Yep, so preliminarily, your engineer has provided some commentary on it, that they're more or less okay with the general components.
Okay.
And then in the engineering review, would verify more intently based on additional data, that that is sufficient.
Okay.
My question?
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, redone?
Yes.
All the trees are proposed to be just seven to nine feet, there's no, I mean, it seems like when these developments go on, all the trees are the same height. Is it normal to, I know we talked with the neighbors, and that was great, but like, the two-story house would be reasonable to have some, maybe some taller trees there that are, you know, a few that are a little taller than, you know, seven to nine feet, just to, I mean, they don't, they don't, what I'm saying, can you stagger them? It looks more natural if there's not all the same, you know, same height.
So you can stipulate that. I believe the applicant, they put whatever their minimum is, that they will plant them at, which will be a requirement, as opposed to exceeding the zoning ordinances minimum. And so that's what we would verify compliance with. It's common for communities more to accept that component, as opposed to say each individual tree clarifying, this one's going to be seven, this one's going to be nine. So when you do site inspection, you'd make sure it's somewhere between that range. So that's more common practice, but if you feel the need to stipulate it, that is something the planning commission could do.
I was just kind of surprised that the two-story home would think seven to nine feet is high enough, but, you know, it's, it'd be nice if there were a few ten to twelves, just in, just a few where the major site lines are, like out of the higher windows of the, of the house, where there's such a much higher elevation, but other than that, you know, it's vastly improved.
Joe? Jabbar, sorry, Joe.
I noticed on part one, or on your first page, you stated site, site plan information for the trees, but I noticed here you said addressed. But being, being that, if you guys look at the elevation, that elevation is going to be low, so if you put twenty-foot trees up there, or thirty-foot, that second story, you're cutting the grade down where his pavement's going to be. So you're still going to have a bird's eye view over the whole lot. And I personally went over there, because I thought I was, you know, I was off, but now that I've went there and saw, that whole berm around the neighbor's house on the east side is all going to be cut by, I'd say, seven to ten feet. So you're going to have to count for that on top of it. So a second-story window, I don't, in my opinion, is going to always see it, even the first story, because you're going to be elevated over the project, if that makes sense, on the east side.
Right here, talking about...
Yeah. This whole area, and this whole, everything, is up like twelve to fourteen feet. And I'm not exaggerating, and the reason why I can prove it is look at the elevations that the engineers put in here.
Right, so you have a finished floor of seven fifty-two.
Correct.
And then the middle neighbor already is at seven fifty-eight, so they're already at a six-foot...
Yeah. Dip.
They're technically standing on a six-foot tall ladder.
Easily.
Already.
Yeah.
Without looking at the seven fifty-two grade change.
Correct, correct, correct. So that's why I'm like, are we putting unrealistic, you know, things on them, to put super high trees, when it's still going to be showing, they're still going to see some of it. I mean, they're not going to see all of it, that's all I had to say. But, as I said Caitlin, you already addressed this one, so, that's it.
Thank you. Maureen, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to add?
Looking at the elevations also, we don't have any natural water bodies here at the top there, but there's a lot of drainage, as we said, water running this way. And it's in the drainage ditches, on the road, things like that. Okay, is there any plan to remedy that?
I believe Taylor, she sent her email to recommend, on the neighbor's part, soils on the right side of the greenbelt, and we plan on doing that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, just from looking at even the post, like even right now, I mean, that whole, that whole stretch of the drainage is not retained either right now. I mean, I would argue that by putting a culvert in, a retaining pond, all the perforated ten-inch drain tunnels, like, I would, I would think by being maintained and engineered to move the water effectively, instead of an unmaintained natural course, like, it's actually going to flow water better versus what it would be right now, because it's just a natural, there is no drain tunnel, there is no culvert, there is no retaining pond, so I think this is likely to be hopeful for the water flow.
There are grain that they have, so...
Right, exactly.
It's there now.
Well, today's a good example, it's raining, so...
Yeah, there's two covers, right here.
Great day to have a site plan here.
So this is...
That's a good...
I think it's an improvement, yeah, exactly.
Steve, do you have any, anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. So, I agree. Can you hear me? All right. I'll try to figure out where to start from, so maybe I will go back to where Joe had hit off a little bit, about the elevations. I do agree, what I don't see here is the fence, is it following the contour of the property, or is it going to be at a horizontal plane?
Usually it's at the edge of the ten-foot greenbelt, so hopefully it's there before that they send it.
Yes, what I'm saying is that, so is the fence going to kind of keep following the contour of the property going down, or is it going to be...
Yes. Well, if you're looking at it like on the east side, and you're walking down, yeah, it'll probably follow the contour of the property.
So what I'm, okay, so what I'm trying to say is that you're telling me that verbally, but I don't see that listed here on the drawing. And by trying to determine if it's adequate, and again, if we don't try to hit a home run onto this with the residents here, it isn't necessarily just also the safety, it's also the well-being of their properties, that anytime they try to sell, the new homeowner comes in here, are they going to be deterred based upon looking at, have we looked at the lights? Have we addressed the issue with the middle neighbor that's already six feet higher? The applicant sent, or the engineer sent over a, basically like an elevation of the trees and the fence, however, based upon what I'm seeing, that's in a perfect world that you're standing at zero. It shows the fence is shorter than the trees, I would agree with that, but again, that's in a perfect world, that this is a flat piece of property. And based on that you've got quite a bit of different contour changes here, we don't really have a great explanation as to what that's going to look like for these neighbors. So, at the...
The ten-foot greenbelt, though, does ascend, so the fence and the trees are, both could be ascending, so the tree should always be higher than the fence, that always says, just like in the drawing, in the little diagram. It's not like we're going to cut the property, you can fence a lot, but you know, it's all going to be making transition.
Okay. Again, it doesn't show the way that the fence, how that's going to be going with the flow of the topography, along with the trees. And when you're standing, if you're cutting, okay, so if you're going to, if your trees are going to be up by the middle house roughly seven fifty-one is what that elevation is there, and your middle house is at seven fifty-eight, that means that you're seven feet higher, standing on the ground. And I'm six feet tall, so if I'm standing there, my eyes are just around twelve feet, looking into a tree that's seven or nine feet. I'm looking over top of those trees, not even from the second floor, I'm looking over those trees from just standing on ground level.
Oh, I know.
I don't think that that's, I don't think it's reasonable for the residents that are abutting up to that. And if you go back and you look at section five, and you read in the screening the intent, it's our duty to address that when you have R one abutting to B two. The other item that I see on here is the, the fence. So, I'm struggling to try to understand how, is it, is the fence considered a wall? It is. So if it's considered a wall, our ordinance specifically says no wood products.
Other than it's in the definition section, it contradicts itself, and then it says that it can be wood.
So, it contradicts here that it says it, it's not supposed to be wood products, but it says that it can, and then if you read that, so if we're treating this fence as a wall, then it also says in here that walls shall be placed on the lot line, which this wall is not on the lot line, this wall is now in quite a bit further, so we've deviated from that. Property wherever possible and shall have no openings. So this fence, if you look on the sheet that was provided, there's at least a one-inch gap in between. That's, that's a gap, that's not a solid, that's not a solid wall, unless somebody has a different opinion about that. And the reason that it says is so that you don't have vehicular traffic or other purposes, except as otherwise provided in this ordinance, and except such openings and the arrangement of such as may be approved by the planning commission, or the purpose of public safety, where walls are pierced, and it goes forth, explaining a little bit more.
What item, Alan?
So this is section five point oh one.
Oh.
And this is in number one item, or letter B.
And so the planning commission can choose to require a wall?
Correct.
Or not require a wall. You can have the gravity require the fence as presented, or you can ask for modifications of that fence, especially as part of that special end use and screening. So you have gravity to require options.
Sure, but it says on here, who you're telling me Caitlin, that it's, wood products are not allowed in the wall, but then it contradicts itself. And then it also says that the walls shall be on the lot line. When did the commission ever decide to allow the fence to be moved in the position where it's at, and not on the lot line?
Because they wanted the greenbelt.
But it also specifies, if you're reading the ordinance further, where you can have the greenbelt also in there. So if you go back into...
If I put the fence on the property line, I don't need a greenbelt, is what you're saying?
No, so if you go back up here, so the problem that we have, and this is not necessarily, I think, yours, Andy, that this, what it says in the locations, where screening between dissimilar uses or districts is required, the screening shall consist of decorative masonry wall, comma, greenbelt, comma, berm, or combination. So, there's three items listed, or combination, to my understanding, means at minimum two, not one. And I realize that there's items that are here, but these are determined by the planning commission, and then it says meeting the following standards below. So again, I'm just trying to look at the, not only the, the safety, but also the well-being of the neighbors that are surrounding here, and it may not just be the current three neighbors that live there, if any one of those three move, you have three more people that come in, and on the west property line, we have kind of, I think, let that go a little bit to the side, because nobody is actually living there, but you still have R one, and correct me if I'm wrong, if, if, if someone buys that property and develops it, and the applicant has already been given the ability to do this, and now comes in, this now makes a, potentially an issue for the supervisor to say, hey, why did this, why did this happen? Why was, why was there not more screening done? And we certainly can't go back to the applicant to say, hey, you need to do more screening if we've approved the site plan going forward. The other item that I see on here too, I know that we've never asked for a photometric, I think Caitlin was reading my, my mind tonight before she got here, but there is a wall pack detail that's listed on here. It is a hundred and fifty watt LED, I realize it is shielded down, however, we don't know what zero is in terms of like what Caitlin explained tonight, so we don't really know how far out that high-powered light, if it will hit any of those neighbors, as well as also on the west property line.
It does on the bottom, height with...
Do you, but do you see that though, is there a drawing that shows how far that goes out?
No, it gives you the, it gives you below the details, look on the details.
I'm looking at right here. Mounted eight-foot height, max aluminum is four candles, and you've got the five-point oh building, and then it gives the dimensions of what the light is. Currently, right now...
Oh, you're saying the projection?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah.
And then the other issue that we have is that the car wash right now, all their lights are facing out, and that site plan required them to be facing down. Now, I realize that that could be an issue that can be handled through the, the building official, but if we don't look at this stuff now to find out how bright this is for these people, I mean, I know that the Van Hooks already right now, without even having these new buildings, are having to have their blinds shut in their, in their bedroom, in their living room.
Who's Brad Hooks?
Van Hooks.
Oh.
Michelle, Amy, I'm sorry, that was in here, last month. The tri-level.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I'm past that.
Her husband already contacted, there's shields on the lights, and they said it's a big improvement.
So the car wash is all shielded now?
On the rear side, yeah.
On the wall packs?
Yep.
Is that true on your side as well, ma'am? Okay.
But you had requested for more trees, correct?
Right.
Along your way, and you're good with that, Andy, and you...
So the other point that had on here is that also on, in section five point oh two of the landscape requirements, you have listed number four, it says existing trees and natural vegetation shall be integrated into the site plan whenever possible. I know that last month that Caitlin had put together, I had sent some pictures and sent it over to you guys to see. Again, still listed on this latest revision, it says here, preserve minimum ten-foot existing greenbelt from all property lines on the east. I understand that that may sound, or that that could just be taken off of there, but again, when this site plan was given to you guys back, we're on revision three, was eight fifteen, so even if you go back in July, I think is when it was originally there, that side of that greenbelt was there, and it's clear cut. And if you go down to the Van Hook house, the tri-level, there's absolutely no greenbelt there whatsoever. So I'm not sure how we can, when you're looking at this, to try to, to say, is the greenbelt, when you calculate the greenbelt, you calculate the trees, and I understand that the applicant has made the trees taller, and has tried to make them tighter, but he still is using this preserved greenbelt along that side that is no longer there. So I'm not sure how we can take that into consideration with saying that that is there when it's clearly not there.
You guys all have this copy, correct? So, if you look at the bottom right picture, no trees were ever removed in that ten-foot greenbelt. There was never trees there to begin, so, with all due respect, all the trees removed west of that. So whether we remove it or not, that's going to be asphalt and self-storage buildings. All the, I mean, you can ask Chris, who's the neighbor, he did the work.
I did, well, I went to Chris Van Hook, who is the property owner of the tri-level, walked in just his backyard, and you can clearly see that everything was cut inside of your property line.
But not within the ten-foot greenbelt.
But your ten-foot greenbelt is right, is from the property line in, correct? And that stuff was cut down from in there, and when you go...
No, there wasn't. If you go a little bit north, yes, but we preserved four trees. Within this ten-foot, there's no tree stumps, there's no grinding, there's nothing.
Okay.
Chris, the tree guy, who's doing the work, who's also another neighbor, will tell you the same thing.
When you go, when you go up along the property line, as you get further north, the greenbelt that you have listed on here has been cut. So to say that it's preserved greenbelt, I disagree.
It's been cleaned, not cut.
It's been clear cut. What's left is a couple trees that are left in there, but certainly not what was there before that would say a preserved minimum ten-foot existing greenbelt. However you want to say it, it's, it's not fully a ten-foot greenbelt, that's all along that property line.
So if there was trees, supposedly, how would you expect me to put new trees there? Or a berm for that matter?
Are you looking for the note to be removed, because it's not relevant?
I would think that you would take it off, because, and we asked for that last month to have it off, if it was not going to be relevant to what was proposed here, it, again, when you're looking at this, to try to put your calcul, to say, okay, has this criteria been met, and when you're using that, X, Y, and Z, but really if Z was taken out, you can't use X, Y, Z for your formula to make a judgment here.
And I think that was on page three.
Yeah, three of six.
Yep, so the note on page three should be removed with the existing.
So, and then we get back to the west side, I realize that you've added more, so my other question, and maybe this is more for Caitlin, is, how come the retention is not, is not encased by the, the wall? Why is the retention outside of, of the property? It's inside the property land, but why is the, why is the fence not encompassing that? So, essentially, that is now a barrier that's there, so if there were children or anybody that were going in there, they're now not protected. If this was in a fenced, if this built, if the fence was moved out, now that it's on their property, now at least it's controlled that children are not able to walk around there to be able to, and this is on the backside, the south side of the property, where really no one can see anything there, so I, it's a safety issue, and I don't see why that the fence can't be moved back out towards the retention, and if the retention has to be moved over to accommodate that, that should, that's, that should trigger a safety concern.
Last month, when we were talking, I think we addressed that, he was supposed to move the fence out to, to encase the retention, or detention, whatever.
Okay, so we don't have a...
I thought we touched base on that, but maybe I'm wrong.
I was not told.
But I thought we had said something on the fact that if the...
We just, we discussed which side should it be on, and I think our general consensus was, we were going to let the applicant choose to encase it or not encase it.
So, as a...
Due to the, oh, no, you're right. Due to our preference. Due to the, oh, no, you're right, um, due to, um, our preference, uh, or the applicant's recommendations for it. So the screening, the nuisance concern is the buildings and the lighting and the traffic, and so the fence is helping prevent that. Um, as opposed to the detention pond, so water should not be staying there for a long period of time. Um, there are different, um, other codes that come to effect, that if it is so steep as slopes, you do have to fence it. Um, it is not so steep as slopes that they do need to, um, from that.
Four to one, I think it is.
I don't remember, but I know there is a, there is a stipulation that when it's this level of, um, intensity aggression. Um, you are required to do that, I don't believe that is the case in this scenario. Um, the planning commission is, again, part of your screening, you can talk about a fence, um, location, where it is appropriate or where it is not. Um, and make good adjustments as you see fit.
So again, I would throw it back at the commission that, saying that I feel that there's a, uh, a level of concern of safety here, that you've got a retention that is. Over a hundred feet in length and forty feet in width, based upon just looking at it here, that's not secured.
I would, I would argue that's because it's a detention pond, I mean, you have an outlet pipe, and you have multiple rivers running around. I mean, you don't encase the rivers with fences for children not to fall into, I mean, and that is literally right next to the property. And it's a detention, so there's only gonna hold a foot or two of water at max before it starts overflowing out of the base drain.
So you don't think a child could, uh, fall in that and trip and drown?
Well, I mean, there's rivers, or, I mean, there's a pond right across, sure, anything could happen.
And what about the water that we had from today's storm that would fill that thing up and potentially overflowed to be deeper? Again, I'm just saying that we're talking about. This, the, the safety and well-being, so if you take a, a fence, Joe, and you go from where it's at there to move it out so that it actually, the, the retention is actually on his property? That it is on his property, but the fence is encasing it so that it is fully on his property, that he doesn't have to worry about. An issue with something happening out there with children coming through those trees.
I would, I'd be concerned that the, uh, increase the access from the, from the storage where you might have, um, less access from the back of the property. But you could have a custom with children, that I, that's why I think it's, it's better to have the fence between the storage and the detention. Cause it, it's highly accessible from the storage, but this area back here is not gonna be a, yeah, it's not as accessible. And it's just like a, it's not even like a pond, cause it's not gonna hold water like a residential pond, it's gonna be just detention.
Right, you could argue that a parent could be going through a storage unit, and their kids are running around playing, and they could.
Playing in a detention.
You know, playing in the, in the detention pond because they have access to it.
Also, two, uh, engineers stated that he didn't want people, you know, so to say, people like fishing or playing around, so, but either way, if it's contingent, you guys want me to move it, I'm moving it.
There's still also a way that you, if you were that concerned by the engineer, that they could put in some type of a, a, a small cyclone fence that would keep that protected from there. Again, this is just me looking at it, I'm sorry, I'm more concerned about the safety and the well-being of, of the people in the community. And it may not happen now, but when it does happen, I certainly don't want to have that on my hands, that we missed something there that could have happened. So I'm more comfortable in saying that you're just shifting it over, we're not asking them to add or do more, you're just moving the fence over. The fence is already, actually, you're reducing it because by moving it out, you're not, um, um, having the one turn that's inside right there, that it would be shifting it over.
It's a wash.
Yes, so it's a wash with moving it over.
Either way, well, would, do you have a problem with that? Just encompass it and be done with it?
As long as it says it on there, and it's a contingent, we can vote on it today, yeah.
Yeah.
And we, I think we need to make sure there's a general consensus on that.
As if everybody agrees.
And one of, the last thing that I had was again, um, Roseanne had brought up a good point, um, I realize it shows that there's about a fifty-foot property line between. The, uh, just around the fence back to her property line, that's not fully wooded right now, that has been cleaned out. I don't see any reason why that there isn't a problem with bringing, um, the same density of the pine trees and bringing those around. So that they're coming at least halfway down that property line on the north side to help protect. Cause her, the trees basically stop at the corner of her property. And I think elevation wise up there. Elevation back there, she's at seven fifty-five to seven, so she's only three feet, so the normal, I think, standard, you know, six-foot pine tree, it doesn't have to be the larger pine trees. Because it's starting to taper off back there, that it would be adequate, and those will be taking off and, and growing. But it would give her some more protection along that side, cause it's, that's not a full fifty-foot width back there. Of, of mature or of some type of a, a green belt that's in there. Those are the, those are the concerns that I had.
Yeah, as, as far as the retention pond thing that you were talking about too, the upside of having the fence to the outside maybe be for the fire department? If they needed to draw water from that pond, they, it's not a fence, there's not a barrier for them to get over to get to water, if there is water in it to use, I don't know.
Because there's not gonna be water.
Yeah, they need a hydrant.
No?
No, it's only, it's shallow, but it doesn't normally hold water, it's only on big, over, excess water.
Like today, but. Yeah, there's just a lot of hard surfaces, I don't know like exactly where that watershed is, that's gonna be.
Just, just a couple of comments, I, I noticed, uh, uh, the green belt issue, um, our definition of a green belt is a strip of land with a definite width and location reserved. For planting of shrubs and or trees, serves as an obscuring screen or buffer strip, comparing out the requirements of this ordinance. So, um, by putting a ten-foot green belt there, that is what it is, that's where he's, he's planting trees. I don't see that there's, you know, a conflict, um, saying that that's a ten-foot green belt, cause that meets the definition of a green belt. Um, and I'm all for higher trees, but, um, I, I don't like moving the goalposts on things like the type of fence when we're on the ninth version of this. Um, you know, we know there's a little discrepancy, and the planner has said that a wood fence is proper screening for us to. You know, we have already looked at this this many times and agreed that wood fence was, was adequate screening. Uh, I, I can't see, you know, like I said, keep moving the requirements. Um, so, you know, as far as concerned, the, the wood, the wood screening is a good screen for, for the headlights, and I know it has like some minor gaps in it. But, um, it's, it's still better than a wrought iron fence or some other type of, you know, chain link. So, like I said, I, I just don't like to see moving the goalposts, you know, I, true that, that, that north property line there is residential. So there should be some trees where, um, Roseanne has said that she needs a little bit more, cause that is a budding res- residential. But, you know, other than that, I'm all for higher trees, but, you know, what he's laid out, I don't want to start changing, um, the requirements that, uh, you know, for the screening and the fence. Uh, other than just tree heights and things like that.
So, so DJ, you're saying that the property line of lot sixty-three, the south side of that, or the?
Yeah, where it's, it's residential across this, um, you know, which follows the center road.
Okay.
And the trees end in the corner, and she stated that there needs to be a little more, cause it's a little thin in that, that, that brochi, green belt area.
Okay.
And that is R1 versus B2, so there should be some smaller trees put in that area. Um, but, you know, as far as the fence and, you know, that's all seems to be more than adequate.
Specifically, is there a number of trees?
Well, typically it's, they have to be a fifteen-foot, uh, pitlin for the area that's missing the screening along.
Well, if you want the intensity that's there, um, you would say you'd want it in the additional.
Yeah.
Or just continue that across the.
Continue, continue that along the additional seven hundred.
Seven fifty?
Uh, yeah, the seven hundred and fifty feet of that property line, but that's not, that's not for.
That can't be that long.
Yeah, yeah, it's, they don't show the dimension of that section for the, um.
Yeah, I just went like this.
Yeah, it's good enough.
When I went like this. So from there.
It'd be roughly fif, yeah, it's about, well, it's about a hundred and fifty, by looking at the fifty-foot from there.
Fifteen trees.
So Caitlin, you're only concerned now. It needs the plan commissions.
Preference.
Preference, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If, uh, I'd like to make a motion, but I'll wait until you have, uh, uh, until you're good with everyone's discussion.
Anyone else, or just any other comments?
I think we all commented on that, that this, this, um, green spacing in the higher density of trees as well as the fence is actually in a depression. It's gonna be lower than the homes, so we're gonna be looking, we're gonna see right over it. Aware of that? You, Joe, everybody comment.
Yep.
All right, and we're okay with that?
These, these trees are at one to two feet of growth per year.
Yeah, they jump.
That's ours, okay.
And on the north side.
And we want trees, um, of the similar density, um, to continue along this property line, that's what we're requesting. Um, on the north side.
Yes.
That's, that's what you've been discussing.
Yeah, there'll be approximately fifteen trees, it looks like it'll fit to kind of follow the same suit as the.
Same pattern.
Yeah, the north south property line.
Because the west side is not as dense at all, and this is not yet populated, but.
But it meets, it meets our requirements.
It meets our requirements, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, Steve, if you have a.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'd like to formally make a motion to postpone or made a center storage site plan parcel IDs. Number one, three dash zero two dash two three dash two two six dash zero two zero. And parcel number one, three dash zero two dash two three dash two two six dash zero one seven for the following reasons. Number one, uh, the fence on the west, uh, property line be moved out around the retention pond. Number two, a better topo cut sheet on the east property, uh, with, I'm sorry. For the topography and for the trees, uh, in relevance to the existing houses. Number three, add six-foot evergreens around the north property line halfway down to the west. Number four, photometric to show the lighting around the site. And number five, to remove the ten-foot green belt preserved anywhere on the drawing. And I can certainly, I can certainly re, re, reread whatever anybody has a question about.
I'll second that, and then we'll have discussion, how's that sound?
Sounds good.
Anybody care to discuss any, any table talk here?
Steve, what was your fifth, again?
My fifth was to remove, uh, any existing ten-foot green belt noted on the drawing.
Caitlin, is there anything that you think should be added, or?
Nope, it's a perfect motion.
Anybody?
Okay, well, I, I think that, uh, you don't need to remove the preserved green belt, cause it is a green belt. Um, photometric, um, probably that information should be provided. Um, and we are all agreement, I think, on the evergreens on the north. Um, the fence around the pond, I don't think we're in agreement on that, um, I think there's, there's a topo for the east. I, you're concerned about the fence following, it looks like it's constant slope, I'm assuming the fence is just gonna follow the six-foot above the.
Yeah, so the reason why I said that DJ was that based upon, um, the applicant's engineer stating that it was gonna be impossible to, based upon the contour of where their property is gonna be at. Excuse, okay, no problem, our, Taylor had also said, yes, you know, it would be hard to follow that. However, Taylor did also mention that we should look at, um, getting a, a cut sheet to try to show a better relation. And the relation, or the, the elevation that we were given, like I said, was in a perfect world, on a flat surface, at zero, you're standing there. Uh, looking at a fence that has taller trees behind it, I don't disagree with that. That's not the, the, uh, instance here, because you've got such a, I mean, great change. You, you're from the first phase up front to the second phase where we're talking, there's a three-foot change just in your property. Now, that's not irrelevant to this motion, but I'm just saying that you've got so much topography change in here. How do we really look at the relevance as to what that, that landscape is gonna look for these people? Until it's up and say, oh geez, that doesn't look good, or, well, maybe that did. I, I'm not willing to take that gamble to see what it's gonna look like, based upon applicant telling us that it's gonna look this way. The residents say that they're okay, but we don't see what it looks like on here, other than a two-D line, that's why I just put that in there.
What, what is that gonna provide you once you have that, are you gonna be able to change the tree height, change the fence height? What are you gonna gain by getting that information?
So what you're gonna gain by is exactly that, if you.
Right, but are you willing to make the changes to make the trees taller, like, that's, what changes would you be able to make?
I'd need to be able to see it though, to understand, Joe, how you're gonna.
No, no, I, I fully get that, well, we say we get it, we, you are completely right, yep, I'm looking right o, I'm looking three feet over this seven-foot tree. Will we, will we say then, okay, let's get twelve-foot trees in there, is that gonna make it better then?
It would, it potentially could, we'd have to look at that, uh, information once it came, because again, if, if I was living there. Or any one of us commissioners were living there at that particular property, I don't think any of one, one of us would be like, hey, that's great, you know, that, maybe you would. I highly doubt that, that you would be, um, excited to be able to stand on your property and look down into that, um, development that's in there that. Is, is in your backyard, that, and we're not talking a, 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 a long distance, we're talking, what, thirty, thirty feet or so?
Right, and I guess my, that, my, and again, it's just a talking point, is, is if, obviously, we're talking, saying that we're twelve foot above, just at ground level, looking across. But if I, you know, that, that, those cuts show us that you're, you're fifteen feet above this six-foot tree, is it even realistic?
Below.
I'm saying our eye height would be fifteen feet above that six-foot tree. Is it even realistic to say, yep, we just have to put thirty-foot trees in there and we'll be set? It was not a realistic option to move forward with the project.
Okay, so then I would ask, I would rebut that by asking, uh, if you don't, if you go on the assessment that, sure, these trees go and grow in two-foot, uh, increments in a year. What if they don't grow in two-foot increments in a year, even though it says on this site plan that they would? If they don't, who's gonna be responsible for that? That it didn't grow, and we're not supposed to be taking into account, to my understanding, what the growth is in, let's say, a year. We're supposed to be handling this screening now, as, as, as an immediate issue. If anything that grows, hey, that's a bonus, that it's gonna be even taller. But at the moment, if we're not protecting the people that are, that are in the residential area, that have to live with this day in and day out, seven days a week. We have to look at that, I feel that that's our duty.
And I, and I fully agree, my question is, what is going to be changed? Cause we know that is going, those cuts are gonna show you that from where the second level window, you are looking twenty feet above these six-foot trees.
I'm not even worried about the second level, I'm even talking just on ground level, my ground level alone right now, you're at a six-foot, you're standing on a six-foot tall ladder.
How, how big of a tree can you realistically spade and move and plant?
And not saying this arrogantly, that's not my problem, that's not my problem too, that's, that's the engineer that's supposed to present that to us. To say, if we kick it back to them saying, we don't feel that there's adequate, or by having a cut sheet like that, that would show a good elevation to show the relationship is where you're at. We could then, as a commission, say, yeah, we really need something tall, is there something tall that you can provide? Or we give them that direction that they have to, and then they have to come back with that. So that's, that's, it's not our job to, to give them that information, it's theirs to present it to us.
Well, I think he provided that by showing what the standard of a tree growth of that species is. I mean, to say if it grows one foot or three foot a year, I mean, we can, what if, all day long?
Sure.
I mean, what if, uh, a tornado comes through, God forbid, you know, it, it's.
But I'm saying.
We gotta go based on what the species is and make our decisions by what we have.
And, and that's true, AKA, and I'm not, I'm not questioning the growth, I'm talking about the immediate screening, because right now, based upon these trees in the location where they're gonna be. And based on the height that they're gonna be planted, day one, we, they're gonna, the, the individuals on that particular property are, are gonna be at a disadvantage. That they're not protected from a business, and it clearly states in the intent on what our duties are supposed to do. And I don't think that we've met that by allowing it to be shorter, even though I agree, from what our ordinance states is a six-foot tree. we asked to go higher, but we also didn't take into consideration of looking at the topography that was there, because we didn't have a elevation sheet.
Oh, we had it from the get-go.
Yeah, obviously, we did.
So, you, where, where is it on the drawing here that shows what the, uh, the, um, what the topography looks like in the-
It's on the, on the elevation.
It shows the eat, we're going up along the whole property line?
It shows all the, yeah.
I get that, that you've got it listed on there, but I'm talking the site, uh, a cut, looking at it from the side, looking at it for these residents to see what they're gonna do.
It's typically not, probably put in the print accessible.
Support the, the view, having the cut, cause it gives us a, a better picture of what we're approving. And, and how it's actually gonna look as it's installed.
Okay, um, but it, the cut, but when you show a cut of dirt, it show, it's, it's understood on the elevation.
So, last meeting-
When you see the dirt, the elevation's on the dirt.
So, all right. Let's go back here, Joe, and let's look at it.
If a cut was required, I would've put it on this week's plan, so this month's plan.
Right.
Last meeting, nobody told me nothing, so.
So-
Right, there you went with higher taller trees than what is more and more so.
On, on your, on your screening detail on the east side, okay, that was just added for this meeting.
Does everyone know what he's talking about or?
On page-
Go ahead.
Page three.
Go ahead. Yeah, we have it.
So, on page three, that this was added, this, uh, and I'm not, it's not the scale issue, it's that you're looking at that from a, a ground zero.
We, we are, like, the entire time, we've taken the elevation into consideration by looking at the seven forty-nine at the rear of the house to where the seven fifty-one has the driveway state, so, I mean, we knew that those houses were higher, that's why we opted for the taller trees be planted initially with more higher density, we went above and beyond what the-
Well, and, and you know what, Joe, that's your, and again, respectfully, that's your opinion about it, I'm s- that's why I made my-
You, you're just saying we didn't take it into consideration, I just don't think that is correct, cause I think it was taken into consideration.
Well, this was just added on here, and it doesn't depict, like I said, if you take the middle applic- or the middle neighbor there, she's standing technically on gr- at her ground in her backyard, six feet higher than what those trees are proposed. That's all, I don't think that that's, that we did the proper job of, of having, uh, a tall enough, uh, screening. On day one, when this job gets its CFO, that particular area is gonna be at a, a deficit, that's all.
Um, so the motion on the floor is to postpone it, um, based on a variety of things that are asked to be added to it. Um, so, if there's no more discussion, the next course of action would be to vote on that said motion.
Is there a second?
There has been a second.
I seconded that, yeah, to get discussion going, yes.
Okay, so, um, by post, well, we're, but we're not even in a, really in agreement on all, all the points of this motion.
So then you would vote, no.
We vote.
Oh, no.
Yep.
Here's, that's not at all, that's not-
Um, so, and it doesn't have to be real public, that she just say yay, nay.
I know, I thought it was, and I kinda looked closer.
Yay, nay.
Okay, so, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So, the motion passes.
Motion passes.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion was to postpone.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
But including all these elements, or are these elements are now decided on this motion?
Yes, because it was voted, it was approved.
So, we-
Unless somebody that voted yes on the motions disagrees. But I-
And why did you vote yes?
Correct, so I think everyone understood that voted yes, that they wanted the fence to be relocated, and that there's three dissents.
So then, he's, and then he's gonna be required to get a, he's good, try to get the slice for the, the elevation view, so the next meeting, we can determine how high we need to go at the tree, or the greenbelt in order to properly-
Who's have a better picture?
So, it would be my five items that I made in my motion.
Great, the fence, the topo.
Do we, do we need to specify how many sections or anything like that, like, two going east-west, one going north-south, or anything like that?
Nope, um, I think it's pretty clear it's that east property line.
Okay.
That we wanna see that cross-section, um, to scale.
It says no scale, no scale.
Yes, you may ask a question, sure.
What is the plan for the cleanup on the, the, uh, the barns in the house, do you have a schedule for that?
Uh, the building permits still open, uh, we're just waiting for it to not rain, so.
Water is the drink.
And you'll never-
Not rain, or snow.
Yeah, and then Macomb County Environmental Health has to inspect the open hole for, uh, septic.
Okay, so, do you think in the next couple of months, you're able to start moving dumpsters, taking down the rest of the barns and stuff?
I think three, four weeks. Half, one of them's already halfway down, the other ones-
I was hoping they're all half down, that's the problem.
Okay. So, okay, so this is everyone, so it's postponed, do you understand?
I'll be waiting for an email with all this compiled.
Um, if you need that to be, I wasn't planning on it, um.
Whatever he said, whatever she wrote down, email it over and, nothing.
It's chairs.
Okay, to the township.
Okay.
That will be it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have public comments. Are there any public comments?
Thank you, Ron.
Roseanne J. Beetham, seven four nine, six five Fulton Street. I just wanna thank you guys for really understanding what's going on in that corner. If anybody came down Center Road today, you see that there's gonna be an issue, and that's what I'm trying to avoid. Now, I have chased the county, I have chased the village, and I've chased the township, and nobody wants to own that ditch. So, the farther back I dug, we found out that it's actually a state ditch. But I can't get a number for anybody at the state, I get this, and there's been nothing, so. He's gonna work on that, but the concern I have is, where's that water gonna go? I know he's putting in a pipe that's going to this drain pond or whatever, but again, we're trying to make water flow a different direction, and is it gonna be enough like today? I mean, I actually had the police out there to put up a sign, because there are people that were hydroplanning, my concern is, that's very deep in my corner. If a car goes in there, is anybody gonna get out of there, are we gonna have people that are gonna drown? And again, it's just something, it, it's not necessary for the planning commission, but how can everybody do, it's not mine, it's not mine. Those ditches are somebody's, and we need to look into that, because this could be a real big issue. For him too, I told him, I says, you don't want to put up all these sheds, and all of a sudden, we get the rain like today, and they're flooded. How are you gonna protect all those people who put items in there and go from there? But, Maureen, thank you for always being concerned, Steve, thank you. You guys, thank you for looking at it, cause I appreciate that, because it's my property that's gonna be devaluated if we can't get this water situation straightened out, and Andy has done a great job, he's walked through it, he's come over, he's talked to all of us, he's done everything, to my knowledge, that he said he's gonna do, he does, so, again, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? I wanna thank Joe Cucci for being here on the planning commission. Um, Joe resigned, he's got lots going on in his life right now, so, um, but thank you.
Thank you, I learned a lot, it's been, it's been good, I, I don't want to leave, but I did spur the best of, of everything, family, mental health, everything else, I just, I can't, I can't put what I feel like is necessary to do a good job, and I think, I don't wanna take a seat of somebody who can do a better job and, you know, do more due diligence and have the time to dedicate to it, so, hopefully we can get somebody that replaces him that does a great job.
Well, thank you, thank you. And I would also like to thank everyone for their kind words and gestures. Towards myself and my family at the difficult time, sorry.
Okay, we're here for you.
It's much appreciated, it's been a rough couple of weeks, but we'll get through it, and a special thanks goes out to the Armada EMS team. They manage things professionally, but yet in a warm and caring way, so thank you all, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, hear, hear in our thoughts and prayers.
We love you, Beth.
So, if there's no other public comments, I need to like a motion to-
I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine nineteen.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?